Welcome to the October 8th meeting of the Winchester Select Board. We're meeting a little bit of an unusual time on Thursday afternoon to deal with some specific matters. We will take the agenda a little bit out of order and we'll start with the waterfield lot discussion as we have some guests with us here today that have made proposals. So again, my name is Mike Ben Court. Joining me today is Select Board members. Amy Shapiro, Mariano Gola Boff and Vice Chair Susan Verdickio. Our Town Manager Lisa Wong is here as well as Planner Brian Sekelly and Council Mia McCarrius and Mark Tugeda Assistant Town Manager. I'm just kind of looking, looking across the board as everything is, is moving as I'm, as I'm trying to read. So as I mentioned, we're going to start off with the, the waterfield discussion. I it's our expectation, I think that we're going to vote and move forward with a singular applicant to recommend. At this point, just to kind of back everything up for people that are just coming on. If you could make sure your name is carefully adjusted, if it says Brian Sekelly, if you could change that, it would be just helpful for, for our purposes and for our, for our record. And if everyone could, could, you know, mute themselves unless they're, they're speaking. So this process started a year ago or so with a RFQ where we had a request for qualifications. We identified a number of qualified developers that could apply and we submitted an RFP that was responded to by several applicants. And now there are five, what I would say finalists in, in place and it's our job to decide on which one we'll move forward with. And Lisa, I'm not sure how we, we wanted to, to start the discussion, you know, we've been talking about this for a while. So I think that just to kind of remind everyone for the record, our, one of our primary goals with this project was affordable housing. Parking is a major component of it as well, but really we've been looking to bring more density near transit in Winchester to the town center. And so that's one of our clear objectives. But Lisa, if you, I don't know if we want to get, get into anything substantive or not.
Yeah, sure. Um, so I did want to ask our town council a question on this. So Mina, given that we're sort of going for, I would say sort of a, in some ways a generic town meeting approval. There's also some discussion about whether it would be wise for the board to have consensus on a top development team, but if it makes sense to also choose a number two at this point in time, or whether we can do that later.
That's a good question, Lisa. The, the town meeting approval is just for the authority to lease the land for the, the term involved here. It doesn't, as a legal matter, require the entity who you're leasing to. So you could have done this even before the RFP for that matter. So the question of whether to identify one or two people, entities is entirely a policy and strategic one, not, not one that you have to worry about to satisfy the legal standard for town meeting.
Okay. Um, then moving on from town meeting. So let's say that we do choose a developer today and have consensus. And let's say that down the road, the developer chooses to back away or something happens. Is, can we just, do we have to pre-identify who that number two is now that we would then go to, or can we do that later?
This is a little bit unusual compared to other bid. Other bids, when you have a sort of straight financial bid, you usually would, couldn't just do that enough time has passed, the bids are no longer valid, et cetera. So in some ways it depends on how far away from the time the bids were submitted and whether they're still valid. There's a period of time that I believe in the RFP, they're usually valid for. You could still go to number two bidder. That's not unusual in this circumstance. If there is a pre-ranking, certainly that makes it easier to figure out who the number two entity might be. But I guess I wouldn't fore, I wouldn't foreclose the ability now to identify them later. But you know, the further away we are from when the bids were submitted up, that may be harder to justify. Just because of changed circumstances, changed economics, et cetera. So.
Okay. So based on that, on back to your original question, Mike, I think it would be a wise idea to at least identify the top two, if not three for each Select Board at this time.
Do we, do we have somebody from Mass Housing on, on this call right now? I don't see. I guess what I'm trying to understand is what is going to be the next step for us? So let's say we identify either one or two, like are we engaging with the developer to make changes or what, what are the next steps? And I think that would determine how many developers we want to identify.
So once we select a preferred developer today, we would notify all of the development teams that we have selected a developer and are entering into negotiations with them. It's sort of a three-way process. So one is we would start negotiating with a developer on the LDA and on the project itself. And we would also be going to town meeting in terms of the specific work that we would do with the developer that we would choose. It would be a myriad of due diligence. So we would be making sure that they understand the process they still need to go through for town approvals. Because there's different financing mixes, we would then look at that in the context of the timeline for the ability of the development team to then go out and get, get their financing in order. So there would be a number of different things that would be happening simultaneously. Once we started working with a development team.
So any thoughts from board members about the, the process moving forward? I will say, although it wasn't clearly stated in the RFP, there was an expectation that was probably communicated that we would be moving forward with a singular applicant going into town meeting. And my only concern is if, if we have two and, you know, those are put in front of town meeting, people might vote against the, the concept if they don't like a particular project. And, you know, I think the, our first goal is just to get town meeting authority to, to move forward with something. We know that any one of these projects would be a home run. So I don't know if any other members have perspective on that at all that want to weigh in.
Well, Mike, I would just kind of emphasize that these are all proposals and there are a lot of intervening steps between now and getting them developed. And that also that, like you said, we are very, very fortunate to have such strong proposals and strong teams to choose among. I wish we had more parcels of land.
So one thing that I'm a little bit hesitant about is we do have one Select Board member who is not here at this time. Mike or Patty, I hadn't heard back from Jackie about whether she was going to be late or missing the meeting.
She said she's going to be late. She had a two o'clock. So I, I'm not sure when, when she's going to show up and so.
So I hate to move, have people wait, but I think maybe moving this towards the end of the meeting would make sense to have all five board members present.
Okay. I mean, I guess I would, maybe we can try to find consensus around recommending, you know, one at this point. And then we can, when Jackie arrives, we can see if there's consensus around moving another applicant or two forward. I, you know, we, we have a, we have a very short window of time for this meeting. I think we only have until three o'clock and we still have a lot to do. So I think if Jackie's going to come on in a, in a few minutes, we can see if we can add her into the second portion of that, that conversation. But I guess I'd like to, to, to move forward. So substantively, is there discussion on a preference for a singular developer to move forward for members of the board?
So, I mean, I think.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just going to clarify. Just what, are we basically talking about whether we want one or two to bring forward to town meeting?
So right now, I think we're, we would be talking about a, one, whoever our first choice would be, if there's consensus around that. And then maybe when Jackie comes back, we can talk about an additional in additional one. So I, outside of just sitting here waiting, I, I don't know what else, you know, we can do at this point.
I can, so I mean, I think from the standpoint of the teams, I think we have, we got five incredible proposals. And I echo what Susan said, I wish we had five different sites that we could. As far as the finances, I know we have to do a lot of additional work to, to make sure that that works, but all of the proposals seem fine. From a design standpoint, to me, the, the number one was Civico. I think that the number one thing is the way that it separates pedestrians from cars. There is no crosswalks inside where, where pedestrians have to navigate crossing vehicles. And the cars are going in an alley. So that's with everything else being equal from the standpoint of of development team being mostly equal with the, the standpoint of, of finances. I have to go with the, the building that we want to see across from the common for the next 99 years. And the design for me is Civico is number one.
Thanks, Mariano. Other members of the board?
Yeah, I, I echo Mariano's thoughts. I think that we've gotten a lot of feedback too, from other groups that have, that were present and, you know, I think really critical stakeholders in town who also agreed with that. So I, I loved reading, it was really helpful too, to read through some of their thoughts. I really think that the, the parking for me, their willingness to, to think through that and and explore what's possible, I think is another really critical part of this development. So I will, I will say Civico is my first choice as well.
Yeah, I don't want to make things boring, but I agree that Civico seemed to be, to hit as many of the right notes as, as possible. And I like what they do with the site as, as Mariano said, and just the, the way they had worked sustainability objectives into like lots of different aspects of the, the design was, was also a plus for me. And like I started to say, you know, there's a long way to go between here and, and having a finished project. And they seemed very willing to work with us and, and to listen to the community as well as, as, you know, all of the teams did. So I, I would put them as, as my first choice as well.
Thanks, Susan. I haven't seen that Jackie has jumped on yet. So if anybody does see her, come on, let me know. I, there's a lot of, a lot of windows here on my computer to move through. But I, I would concur with the rest of the board on Civico. And I was amazed how many community stakeholders agreed with that assessment as well and really weighed in. So we heard from a lot of different groups, organizations, elected boards, appointed boards, individual residents. So that, that seemed to be the project that most stood out. I, I think it's not just the ideal project for us, but it's, we've got to sell this as well to residents. And we've heard from people that have been nowhere near this project that they're concerned with parking. That's always the issue in Winchester is that, you know, everybody wants a parking space right in front of wherever they're going. And it's going to kind of take a long time to, to wean us off from that. With that said, you know, I am concerned with the ability to go underground there in a financially feasible way to get the, the parking for Winchester residents to, to allow capacity for that. So, you know, that's, that's the only issue. And I think what Brian has mentioned as well, that while we have the initial concept, this is in no way the final rendering of what's going to happen. That's a longer process over a period of months. But I would, I would recommend Civico and then I think we should really have the conversation about a, a backup or another, another group I would, would, would be, I would, I would put Penrose forward in, in that sense as another developer. If we chose to, to, to move forward with two, but and I see that I've been rambling long enough that Jackie has come on. So hey, Jackie, how are you? Can you hear me? Hey, Jackie.
Connecting to audio.
Jackie, can you hear me? We'll just wait for, for Jackie to come on. Hey Jackie, can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah, sorry about that. I apologize for the delay.
No worries. I, I know it's tough in the middle of the day when we throw these meetings on. So we've just been discussing the waterfield proposals and our process moving forward. There seems to be consensus at this point, just backtracking from the board that Civico is the, the, the project to move forward. And so you agree with that. And if you'd like to make some comments to that effect that, you know, we all, we all did.
Okay, that's great. I don't want to belabor this, but, and certainly not to disrespect the process, but just add a deference to the board and that it is the middle of the day. But I think I have indicated some positive comments during the respective hearings. It seems like the, this project kind of hit into many of the categories that the RFQ was seeking. Also, the proponents were extremely responsive to not only the questions, but also their solutions to many of the issues seemed to reflect a great deal of experience as well as agility of mindset. And I think those are combinations and a team that we're seeking, not to show any disrespect or shade on any of the other applicants. Extremely grateful for all of those and feel honored to have been part of this process. So thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. So in, to kind of close the loop on this specific one, seems that there's consensus around Civico as the first applicant to move forward. Jackie, there was a question that we began to discuss about whether we would move forward another applicant or more than one. And it, you know, may be beneficial for us to, you know, at this point, add, add another developer in to, to keep the discussion going. But we're, you know, I'm, I'm open either way. I don't know if you had thoughts around that.
That's a brilliant question. I would just say that, you know, I think that sometimes as the projects move along, there's more information that's learned with respect to a lot of things, but including infrastructure impact. And while a lot of those things can be negotiated, it has caused some hitches and some other projects that I won't name within our town. And so, but as long as, you know, we're committed to a, a process that involves a lot of transparency on behalf of the developers so that, you know, we can continue to have a, a good understanding of what the impact is and whether or not we may or may not need to seek additional consultants to establish that or to negotiate anything else. It, you know, I guess I'm sort of torn because I understand the concept of having another one advance. At least I, I guess I'd want to know more what the next level would be. I don't see any downside in doing that. On the other hand, if this is, I know this is somewhat time sensitive. I guess I, I want to hear from others on that, including our town manager. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Lisa, any, any thoughts? I know that you, at the outset, you had kind of mentioned you know, your, your feelings on it. If you could maybe revisit that a little bit.
Sure, Jack. It is a great question. So I consulted our town council on this meeting earlier about whether it would make sense to choose a second choice now. For example, if our, our first choice backed out or, or something prevented the project from moving forward. And I think one of the constraints of waiting until later to pick a second choice is that enough time might have gone by that this process would be invalidated in terms of having to go out to bid again versus utilizing this project right now. And I don't see the screen, but yeah, I'm sort of filling in. You know, the, the first and second choice as people are, are giving it to me.
Forgive me, I'm not sure if I understood your comments totally, but I think you were weighing in favor of advancing a second project to the next level. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
In terms of advancing it to the next level, I think it would just be that we would be identifying another developer that we would reach out to and negotiate should anything happen that we would not proceed with the first choice.
Oh, when you say another developer, you mean within this pool or potentially starting from scratch?
Now, within this pool in order to not start from scratch.
Right, exactly. I understand. Okay. So you, so if I understand you correctly, you're, you're suggesting that we go forward with one, but knowing that if, if a hitch arises that we try to figure that out as quickly as possible so that we can try to engage another proposal that had been considered.
Correct.
And I had mentioned, you know, Penrose as being another one of the applicants that I would move forward in that kind of second seat. That's why if you're looking at the screen, Jackie, that's why Lisa has put it in there. So so that is, I think that we all agree on the, the first choice. It's to see if there's consensus around a second choice, if even the developer would want to be in that role. I don't know.
Well, we had talked about, you know, how to do this and whether we would, might want to have, you know, one top choice and then a, a backup or, you know, in case of some crazy hitch arising. So I was again, very torn. These are all good proposals. I was torn between Penrose and Waterfield Preservation Partners. But I guess if I, at the end of the day, I would, I would put Waterfield Preservation Partners as my, my second choice. Again, they just sort of seem to have a, hit as many of the, the goals as, as, as possible.
Any other members of the board want to weigh in on that second position?
I, when it's my turn, I'm happy to.
Okay, Mariano.
Yeah. So my, this one is a tough one because I think there's two that are very close. I, I really appreciate the number of units that, don't write down yet, Lisa. The number of units that I win, but for the 80 to 120%, I think that sometimes the, you know, we, we look a lot into the SHI, which is for up to 80% and the 80 to 120%, which includes a lot of town employees. Doesn't get as much attention. So from that standpoint, I thought the win proposal was stronger on the affordable housing. However, the Penrose proposal also has some of the 80 to 120%. I wish it had a few more units in general. It is the, the proposal with the, the fewest number of units, but I think that as the number two, that might be able to, to be bumped up maybe. And the design is certainly the, the number of intersections between where, where there could be a collision between vehicles and pedestrians is much better in the Penrose proposal because there's only one very wide, clearly marked at the front sidewalk. So anybody walking to and from the, the train station won't have as many collision points. So it's very close between these two, but I would put Penrose as my second choice and when as my third choice, but very close.
Amy, what do you think?
So I don't know if my, my second choice will be consequential or not at this point, but I, I was really impressed with NOAA. I like that they're nonprofit. I like their experience in affordable housing. I liked their design. I thought it was a little bit more subtle than some of the others. So I'd probably say my second choice would be NOAA. And I think my third would probably be Penrose.
Jackie.
Okay. And thank you so much again for everyone's patience. I, I, this was a little tricky. Obviously I'm sure for all of us personally, as soon as I saw the Penrose elevation, I thought, wow, that's so interesting because it, it kind of mirrors some of the other architectural elements in town. Not just some of those that would be indicated in Civico or in some of the other buildings. So it presented a variety, but also a variety that also exists in the town. Also, I was favorable to, I think Mari, Mr. Goleboff pointed out well, and I apologize, I missed Mr. Betancourt's comments. But, but that the proportion is something that with respect to the affordable units, which was something that Mr. Goleboff that was a, a priority for him. And I, I, I respect those comments. I also thought that the size overall, I don't mean the dimensional size, but the number of units seemed perhaps in keeping with this site overall, which is obviously not that large compared to, you know, basically in terms of the square footage. So long story short, I guess I was aiming to Penrose's second and NOAA as third. And I would also point out that the comments of the planning board to me were very impactful. As, as they, as they often are, but here I thought that they did a very careful analysis and the fact that they do have a lot of experience with what's consistently envisioned for the town center, I think is, is very impactful. And I think they had a toss-up between Penrose or NOAA in their final analysis. They may have put Penrose third. I'm not quite sure, but for me just personally, I thought the Penrose design just offered kind of some more variation in our town center that, that still embraced many of the qualities that exist. So I guess that's where I, so yeah, so Penrose and then NOAA. Correct. Thank you.
Okay. So I think it makes sense for us to formalize the process a little bit. As long as everyone's comfortable with moving forward in this way, we would be our first choice with Civico and, and it, and it seems to be consensus around Penrose for that second spot. And unless I'm hearing otherwise. And unless I'm hearing otherwise. I could take a motion to that effect.
So I, I guess I moved that we, um, designate Civico as our first choice to move forward, uh, with on this, uh, proposal. And that our second choice would be, um, Penrose.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes, and it is a point of clarification if I could. I believe the vote related to the order and not necessarily the, um, unless someone tells me otherwise, the, the earlier question as to whether or not to advance more than one. Um, I think those would be two separate votes, but please let me know if I'm miss, misunderstanding.
Actually, uh, Mina, do you mind weighing in on, uh, how we need to structure the vote, whether we need to have a separate vote or one versus the other? Like one for Civico, one for Penrose, one to advance two first and then to choose two?
So let, let me describe what I think is the intention and then, um, uh, Mr. Chair, what I would suggest is just making sure that everybody agrees this is the intent here. My understanding was that you intend to advance and begin negotiations, uh, towards a project with Civico. But that should there, you know, you encounter difficulty with, with that or something happens and that project is no longer moving forward, um, rather than, um, you know, you want to have captured who the second, um, and third choices are from the board. To negotiate with at that point. So you're not, you're not simultaneously negotiating with multiple parties. You're only negotiating with the number one choice, which was unanimously Civico and, and deciding who the backup essentially is. Is that correct?
That's what I was thinking.
That's, that's my understanding.
That's my intention too.
Okay. Uh, I don't want to cut off Jackie or Amy, if, if that's before.
No, I, I, and I respect your points, um, Attorney McCaryus, because it may be complicated actually negotiating, you know, that verb with more than one party and there needs to be a clear line. So I respect the comments that, um, that you made. I think that they're, they're helpful to us.
Okay. All right.
Mina, sorry to interrupt. The, the alternative would be if Civico, something happened to Civico. The alternative, if we didn't do this, would that we, would we have to reopen a new RFP or would we be able to go to Penrose in the future?
What I, what I was suggesting is that you, um, that's, it's hard to for, forecast that at the moment, whether you would have to go to a new RFP or not. So selecting a backup is not a bad idea because it, it sort of gives you, as of today at least, where your second alternative wa, is. So if that is the understanding of what you're doing, um, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm gonna just verbally draft, uh, a proposed motion. And again, if, if this, if this captures the intent, then, then you can move, maybe perhaps somebody can move it in that form. Um, I would say that the board move, move that first it selects Civico, select to proceed with Civico and negotiate, um, with Civico for the project. And second, if necessary to, um, to, to negotiate with someone else because you're unable to reach agreement with Civico at, at some point in the future, that it is the agreement of the board that the second choice can't, second choice proposal is the Penrose proposal. And rather make anyone repeat that if that's accurate, uh, so moved would probably be sufficient. So I don't know if that.
I was about to say.
And I'm sorry, a point of clarification if I may. So I understood exactly every single word of what Attorney McCaryus just said that, but just to clarify so that I don't misunderstand, but we go forward with Civico and not commit to going forward with Penrose. All we'd be saying about Penrose is that they ended up in second. Is that, is that fair to say?
That's, that's how I was understanding. Yeah, you're not, you're not planning to negotiate with Penrose, but if you do need to, uh, that is your backup is Penrose.
Thank you for that clarification. I second that motion.
Uh, before you do, Jackie, just actually I, just sorry to be s- stickler on procedure on this, um, but, Lisa, uh, alerted me, thank you, that, um, I believe you have another motion outstanding.
So I think we already voted on it. So maybe we can reconsider that motion with this one?
Yeah, we did vote.
It, it's pretty close to the second one. So I, I, I'm comfortable with a reconsideration, knowing that it's just providing clarification on the terminology.
I don't think we finalized the vote actually. So, um, we can, um, I mean, um, Mina would know, and I, I, I'd actually, I don't want to put more pressure on the board, but I'd, I'd rather if we, we moved the motion, um, from a board member. So, um, just to clarify, and Mina, I don't know if there's anything that you can even put in the chat, is that, that motion, um, to make sure that everybody's on the same page? Cause we're complicating it a little bit.
Sure. Um, I'll try to type that out. Give me just a second.
Mike, uh, while that happens, it can, uh, do we want to take something else up? That way we're not, um, putting Mina under the, the spot as far as timeline. So he has five or 10 minutes to do it.
It's already in the, um, the, the chat, but Mina, I'm sorry, you.
I did it just to you, I think. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see it.
Oh, there we go.
So that's great.
Thanks.
Okay. So what, what do we do with the previous motion? Just should I withdraw it or?
We, we actually didn't finish that motion. So, um, it, it was moved and seconded, but, um, um, withdrawn.
All right. So I moved that the board, number one, select Civico as the winning bidder for the Waterfield Lot Project. And to initiate negotiations with Civico for said project. And two, that it is the consensus of the board that the Penrose proposal is the second place proposal, such that if it becomes necessary to engage in negotiations with an entity other than Civico, the board will proceed to negotiate with Penrose instead.
Okay.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously, um, five to zero. Um, and I think that we've got the, um, motion there, um, in the chat, um, for, for Patty, if, uh, she's recording. Um, and I, I just want to say thank you, um, to everyone involved in this project. The town has been working on this for a very long time and the, um, process was made better by the skill level that all the developers, um, brought in, um, and really responded to the needs, um, to the, to the town and, we really, really appreciate you in, investing, uh, time and energy in, uh, in the town and, and we hope to try to bring you back for another project at some point. So thank you. Um, and I'll, um, uh, at this point, uh, I'm gonna take the, uh, agenda a little bit out of the order because I know that we've got, um, some residents, uh, here. Um, so we'll move on to the net zero stretch code municipal resolution. Um, and I see, uh, Ken Pruitt, um, is here. Hey, Ken, how are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Great, great. Um, we're behind as usual. Um, so, uh, thank you for bringing us to us. I see, uh, Sue Dubler and, uh, Tom Howley, uh, as well in front of me. I apologize if I'm, uh, missing anyone else, but, uh, welcome. What do you got for us, Ken?
Thank you. Well, thanks so much for making time on really short notice, uh, for us to bring, uh, this matter to your attention today. Mr. Chairman and members of the board and Lisa, we really appreciate, um, speaking with you today. And so, um, I'll try to keep this really short because you have a letter that, that, uh, lays, lays out the issue pretty well. But, uh, as you know, uh, the Climate Action Plan Committee, uh, of which Tom Ali and, um, Sue Dubler and a number of other of us, um, helped write, uh, called for substantial reductions in greenhouse gas emissions over the next, uh, the coming decades. That will require, um, a series of actions and tools to accomplish. The plan specifically, one of the measures in the plan specifically called for advocacy by the town, uh, with the state to create a net zero stretch energy code, uh, so that at least as we build new buildings in the future, they can, um, be net zero as opposed to needing to retrofit buildings later uh, that are built, um, with substantial fossil fuel infrastructure. The good news is that an opportunity is, uh, before us right now to, to advocate for a net zero stretch energy code. And that is because the, uh, Massachusetts Legislature, the House and Senate have each passed their own, um, pretty strong climate bills this year. They were different. And so there's a conference committee resolving the differences between those two bills. The Senate version of the climate bill contained, um, a measure calling for a stretch energy code to be developed by the Department of Energy Resources within a year of passage of, of the act. And that, um, that measure would be tremendously helpful. It would, it would create an opportunity for Winchester and other communities after local discussion and after a town meeting vote, um, if we're successful to adopt that stretch energy code, um, that would go quite a bit further than the current stretch energy code that the town already adopted. And so, um, you know, there are a lot of competing interests at work on any bill in the legislature. And what we're asking is for this board to be on record, uh, with our legislative delegation, all of whom are wonderful on this issue, but nevertheless, um, to, to have the backing of the select boards specifically to go to their respective chambers at the State House and advocate with leadership and also with the six members of the Legislative Conference Committee to include in the bill that is reported out, we hope it is reported out, the Senate's language on the stretch energy code. And that could give us a very powerful tool, a toolbox to, to get, to meet the, the goals of the Climate Action Plan. The letter that we sent has a lot more detail and it has a suggested, uh, resolution that you could adopt or, um, or edit to, you know, whatever you felt was, was appropriate. But we really do appreciate, um, this board's and Lisa's, uh, leadership on climate issues. Uh, it's, it's gratifying to live in a town that is committed, uh, to taking action on this important issue. And, uh, that with that, I'll, I'll stop. I don't know if, um, my fellow former cap committee members, Sue and Tom, want to add anything, um, but also happy to answer questions.
Yeah, no, I think that was, uh, that was great, Ken. Uh, the only thing I would say is that, and it's in the materials you receive, which is that, you know, in Winchester, uh, like a lot of communities, uh, about sixty percent of our carbon pollution comes from our buildings. So over a period of years, it's going to be really important that we transition in a really thoughtful way, our buildings to renewably sourced electricity. And that's a big deal. Um, and then it's going to require, just like the plan itself and many aspects of it, a full community discussion. And I think that the importance of the legislation that the legislatures or legislators are working on is that this will provide, if passed, it could provide a statewide, uh, net zero, uh, uh, stretch code option. And that will frame the debate that we must have in Winchester. Um, and so, um, your action today would indicate your support of something that I believe will be absolutely necessary, um, for, uh, to provide that options to cities and towns across the Commonwealth. But what it will not do is it will not impose it upon Winchester. That will be left to all of us to engage each other in a real authentic discussion about whether it's right for our community to do it. But without that kind of stretch code, it'll be very difficult for us to really frame that issue and present people with a clear choice, um, so that they can decide. So that's the, that's the only thing I would say. I think it's very important that, uh, that the legislature act.
Sue, you're muted still.
I very much agree with, uh, what, uh, Ken and Tom have said, and I really appreciate your meeting with us today. This is what I, I think is going to happen with, uh, the work on climate is that we are going to have to partner much more with the state on multiple issues. And this is, um, one of the first opportunities we really have to do this. So I think this is a really important action.
Great. Thank you. Any, um, questions, uh, for members of the board? Comments?
Yeah, just thank you, uh, for bringing this to our attention. I think, uh, you know, climate change is, is the challenge of our generation. It's the number one issue that affects, uh, not just Winchester, but, uh, the whole world. And, uh, we, we need to address it. And, um, this is, uh, this is a good step, uh, towards that, towards giving the town the flexibility and the whole state, uh, to start addressing it at a local level. Thank you.
I also wanted to thank everyone for participating today, um, given that it's a middle of a workday and, and so many other, um, pursuits that everyone has. So thank you for all your, um, support and hard work on this important matter. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Amy, did you have something you wanted to, I say unmute?
No, I'm, I'm in full support.
Okay, great. Thanks. So, um, Ken, I, I think ideally we would, uh, we would need a, a, a motion, um, to support, um, the, for this like board to support the, uh, resolution, uh, in support of a net stretch, uh, net zero stretch energy code. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we, you know, drafted, uh, a, uh, sample for you that you could adopt whole cloth or, or edit, but ultimately, you know, we came to you because we think it's important, um, for the legislature to know and our legislative delegation to know that this is backed not just by, you know, those of us who worked on the Climate Action Plan, but, but by, uh, you know, by town leadership.
Thanks, Ken.
Um, I, I just would like to hear from town council, not in any way shade or negativity, but on something that's important. It's this, so, um, if we're voting today, I'd like to hear from town council on this. And if we're not voting today, then, then maybe we can, um, hear from town council the next time that we would be in a position to vote on it. Thank you.
Jackie, I'm not sure what, what the exact question is on it. There, uh, you know, whether this can be, it's, it sounds like the, the question is just a request to support, uh, pending state legislation, which certainly are entitled to, to do by, by your vote.
So I, I've read it. I don't know if all, everybody has read it and is comfortable with what it says. It's not, uh, an extensive document and it's, it's very clear. Seems to me, um, that the intention is to express our support as a board in a town for this pending legis, pending legislation, two bills, which would create a, uh, net zero stretch energy code statewide. And, and, you know, I, I could move to adopt what we've looked at or if, you know, if, if everyone would feel more comfortable to come, come back at the next meeting and actually adopt this, that I think that, you know, either way.
I think we have a, a pretty good template. Sorry, Susan, you know, here, um, you know, I, I mean, I, I'd be comfortable with a, with a motion to move forward with, um, what has been submitted, um, by Ken, if that's.
Yeah, I, yeah, I read it. It's a short resolution just to support the, uh, the two bills. So.
Can, can I just add? The reason why I ask for town councils, um, input is just. Can can I just add? The reason why I ask for Town Council's input is just because I understand to the extent that it's, you know, the whereas is and that it's support for the bills and who knows, they, you know, maybe strengthened or less strengthened, who knows? So I understand the the point here, and I understand the importance of the topic. The only reason why I wanted to suggest the Town Council weigh in is just, and it doesn't necessarily have to be today, but even at some point, if the bills are passed and become law, you know, just even little things like would our with the state then kind of the state law sort of be superimposed over or whatever is might be a respective town like building code or something like that. And I I don't want to delaborate, belabor it in this meeting. I'm I'm completely fine with voting in the affirmative. I just wanted Town Council, you know, to express what he did and then know that at some point we may need to revisit this, particularly if the law passes. And again, not in anything negative, but just really honestly, just to make sure that our town policies and procedures, et cetera, would be consistent. Thank you very much.
So I move that we adopt this resolution in support of creation of a net zero and stretch energy code by the Conference Committee for Senate S two five zero zero slash H four nine three three, the two bills in the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, Sue, Ken, Tom, and everyone that's worked on this. You know, keep us posted. I think it it is important for legislators to hear at the local level from from leaders that this is something that's necessary and important and that we're thinking about these things. So thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
So really appreciate it.
So I I know that some of our members have a hard stop at three o'clock. So are there items, Lisa, that we need to be moving forward with more than others? Certainly, we've got a we've got the warrant and we've got.
The clerical MOU and we have the C A A C members.
Okay, so we'll we'll go to the the clerical MOU, if that's move that forward. Are there any additional questions or comments from board members? Or are we comfortable with moving forward with the MOU as presented?
I just wanted to jump in and thank our wonderful town manager, her team, and specifically Ms. Vibert, particularly given all the things that she has going on for all the hard work, but also all the team on behalf of the the clerical union for all their hard work and their their patience, their constructive, open mindedness, listening to all sides, willingness to have, you know, something to have an outcome. So I think it's it's always worth congratulating and sending praise when something is able to advance to this stage. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jackie. Unless there are other questions, I'll take a motion to approve the clerical MOU as presented.
So I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the clerical workers' union, SEIU Local eight 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 Winchester as presented.
I get.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. The we'll move on to the Climate Action term appointments. We had moved forward with the the ranking and selection of certain members, and they've identified which terms that they would prefer. And I think, Lisa, did you have those in front of you or?
Yeah, I first just I just want to very quickly thank Stacy Ward for her help on the clerical contract as well, as well as everything else she does as well.
Yes.
So for the Climate Action members, we had told you that we would reach out to all the members on Monday. And I'm just letting you know that not everybody got back to us. So we know those who did get back to us preferred a two-year term, though some were flexible in terms of the one-year term. So given that the staff recommendation is to move forward with four-year terms for the four individuals who actually got back to us first and who also indicated that they wanted to do two-year terms. So that's that's I had it up.
I have it too, if you want.
Yeah, Susan, if you want to move that unless there are other questions or comments, it's what was, you know, it's based on the responses we received.
Right. So I move that we appoint Prosetta Calavi, Wei Chen, Rick Eno, and Ruth Trymarki to two-year terms to the Climate Action Advisory Committee.
Second.
Can we have that specifically ending October of twenty twenty-two, just so I have a month in there?
Such terms to expire in October of twenty twenty-two?
Second.
I'm all in favor. I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero.
And then I move that we appoint Alan Field, Adriana Garber, and Jason Roder to the Climate Action Advisory Committee for a term of one year or each for a term of one year expiring October of twenty twenty-one.
I get.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Warren articles. We've got two minutes on there. And I I think to Mark had kind of drafted a a a list of the substantive select board articles for us to review. Certainly, there are many others, but the the ones that are really before us are Article eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-one. Lisa, I don't know if you have that or I can.
I only have a hard copy. Mark, is that, do you have the ability to share it?
I think Patty. Patty? Do you have it? You can throw up on the thing? Okay, Mike, it's going to take a couple of minutes, but.
That's fine. I put it in the chat. So if there are questions about any of those in particular or any issues or we can hear them now.
So just to add to this, there is the Brian, there, I can't remember which article it is, but the one that the planning board was looking, whether this like board was going to co-sponsor.
Correct. The article on home occupations, I I don't know what the numbers, the number is on the current article.
Yeah.
But is the it's the one for home occupations. It might be six or seven, but I I don't know.
So we would need to know that at this meeting as well.
Is that is that the one that allows people to work from home from an accessory building?
Yes.
Yes.
And since everyone's working remotely, people need to do this, so.
Yeah, that that it had come through us initially and just wanted to make clear for town meetings that it's something that we support as well and, you know, wanted to move it forward because it's kind of a grater.
Yeah, Mike, home occupation is Article four currently.
Four.
Okay. Yeah.
I I can throw the slides up on if there's any questions. Or I don't know what you guys, if you have any questions about it.
It's not a new article. We're just sort of editing the amending the existing one. I mean, it's not a new zoning paragraph. It's it's just editing.
Yeah, it's the it's the regulations that govern home occupation. We do, it's zoning by law section three point two point one, and we're taking out one of the restrictions. One of the restrictions is that no home occupation shall be conducted in any accessory building. So we are taking that.
Can you confirm the article number so we know?
Four.
Article Article four is the is the home home occupation article.
Yeah.
So it's a little tough to see here, but yep, keep it right there, Mark. You can see what's what's happening is that this number four, where it says no home occupation shall be conducted in any accessory building, that is getting struck through. That's one change. And the only other change is that in number two, there's an the addition of the word accessory building. So you're looking at the total square footage instead of just looking at the total square footage of the dwelling unit. You're looking at the total square footage of the dwelling unit plus the accessory building. So it's just saying that it can only be a certain size. It still can only be twenty-five percent of the total floor area. It used to just be the dwelling unit, but now we're, since we're allowed to have, or since the point is to allow them in an accessory dwelling, an accessory building, that now you have to put those square footages together to get the total.
So by and is this a planning board article?
Correct. This is a zoning bylaw.
What was the vote of the planning board?
I mean, this is a planning board article.
I know, but did they take a vote to put it on the warrant?
That is going to happen on Tuesday, but there's nothing preventing that that vote. So technically.
They haven't done the vote yet.
It technically is not, they have not done the vote yet because we wanted to know whether you were co-sponsoring it as is.
Oh, I see. Okay.
We were waiting for the co-sponsor.
So so but so for number four would be removed. So in other words, where it currently reads no home occupation shall be conducted in any accessory building, that would no longer be the case. And instead, it would be replaced with there shall be no sales of products on the premises and connected with such home occupation, correct?
Well, I would I wouldn't say replaced. I would just say that the number, yeah, that number four is getting deleted and a new number four. Yep. Yep. Okay, so you're right. You're right.
But but doesn't that mean that then somebody could rent out an accessory building, like somebody could actually live accessory building as opposed?
Very, yeah, it's a very good question. So no, that isn't, but that is that is not allowed. So if you actually if you read all these regulations in here, one through eight. So first of all, the person has to be a member of the family that you can't work there unless you're a member of the family living there. But it's not even just a member of the family. You have to be actually living there. You can't create any noise. You can't get any traffic. I mean, it's highly, highly regulated. This is essentially for putting, you know, what people are doing is they're putting, you know, offices, meaning meaning multi printers and, you know, a laptop. I mean, this is so these are highly regulated, meaning you you can't generate any more traffic. It has to be people that are living in the home. This is, these are what all these regulations state in one through eight here.
Right. I understand the situation. I guess if we're voting today, well, I I request that we defer voting today. If the is not in favor of that particular article, then then I I my vote won't be yes, but I'll decide if it's a no or a seen as of today. Thank you.
Well, okay, just to be clear, I don't I don't I don't know if you're voting to put it on the warrant right now. We the only reason or one of the main reasons I'm here is to see if this is going to be co-sponsored by the select board.
I understand. And that's what I assume would be the motion is whether or not we would be co-sponsoring this article.
Correct.
Right. Okay, so that's what I was referring to. I really appreciate all your help. Very helpful.
It's just to clarify a little bit. It's it's my understanding that there's the full support of the planning board with this article. And, you know, we we you know, I think that we it would make sense for us to join in. It came through the chamber to us over the summer when there was, you know, an issue that we realized that this was prevented. And all of a sudden, it's really what everybody's doing. And, you know, so we in we were asked to issue an order to allow this, and we tried to do it. And then council ruined our party and said, we don't really have the authority to do that. So we teed this up for the fall, but we're not, we're currently not enforcing this provision. People are working in this capacity in their units, and we're just doing some cleanup work here. And it seems nice for us to join in with the planning board on this article. It's it it's as light lifting as, you know, we.
Yeah, I I would just I would just add it not to overcomplicate things because I know we need to keep moving, but the all the some of the terminology that's used in this proposed warrant article has different meanings. And certainly, the the goal, I'm not against this, has been articulated by the chair and by Mr. Sekeli, but the impact of some of the terminology, other bylaws, I would just look at further. So I don't want to take any more time with my comments on this. I'm just trying to explain my position. Thank you.
So Jackie, would you be comfortable with us making a motion to approve and join with this article subject to the unanimous unanimous support of the planning board as presented? Mina, you don't like that?
Well, I I'm just a little bit confused. Why are you subject? I'm just confused on why the condition is subject to the unanimous board. The the planning board doesn't have to have a unanimous vote.
Or or approval from the planning board. I just, I I think, you know, maybe Jackie, are you concerned that we haven't, that the planning board is not in favor of this or?
The the goal that has been articulated, again, I don't want to take up too much time. I really appreciate everyone's patience, but it sounds great as far as the goal, but accessory housing and accessory buildings and what can and cannot be done on accessory buildings, other than just the doing their own work. It's it's a very complex area of the law, as a term carrier is maybe aware. In many, in many towns, there's a wide variety of definitions of of uses of accessory buildings. So I just like to have, you know, more information and other than today. So I totally respect if the board needs to call a vote. Or we don't necessarily have to be unanimous in any event, but it's it's a very complicated area of law. If the goal was certainly has has been articulated, that would be easy. Obviously, I have no problem with anybody doing work in their accessory building. It's just that we need to be mindful that this is there's a lot of land use activity around. And I would just want to make sure that the terms we've chosen to use here only achieve the goal that's intended and something else. Thank you.
This has been approved by council, I believe. Yes?
Yes, it's been discussed by me. In fact, I I raised some of the same questions Ms. Welch did with the planning board. The planning board explained their view to me at a meeting. Art and I have both reviewed it. We've reviewed every single one of the zoning articles, actually multiple times with Brian. So Jackie, your point's well taken, but I I am comfortable to say that all this does is allow home occupations and accessory buildings. Nothing else, nothing changes about home accessory.
Right. But if but if it's dependent on regulations, which are not subject to the town meeting vote, correct?
No, it's not dependent on anything other than this language. It this was a matter that was coming up because except by not allowing home occupations and accessory buildings, the building inspector, who also does zoning enforcement, was basically, you know, put in a position of if someone works above their garage, are they now in an doing a home occupation accessory building? That seemed untenable, especially given our all of our experiences the last six or seven months. And so the change was proposed. I had a concern about the definitions elsewhere in the bylaw to make sure that, for instance, you couldn't open up a business above your garage. In working through with Brian, it'd be, it was clear that that had been taken care of and addressed. And the planning staff, Brian, had really thought about that. And we, in our review, we thought it was it was well drafted. So I I'm I'm comfortable with it. I certainly, you know, respect your your choice, whether you need more or less time to talk about it. I know there's other articles here, so I don't want to belabor this either, but.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I rest assured, I understand crystal clearly what the goal is here, which I do not disagree with whatsoever. I'm only commenting as a practitioner in land use law. This is a very complex area. And by striking entirely no home occupation shall be conducted in any accessory building, you know, not questioning anybody's legal analysis or drafting terminology, but also to the extent that Mr. Sekeli noted, I thought I heard him say that there may be some regulations along these lines. If I answered that. Is that correct?
The regulations are in front of you.
Yeah, well, those regulations.
These are the regulations.
Those are the by law, three point two point one.
Then I misspoke. These are, this is what I'm, I I what I can't scroll up because it's because it's marked, but but basically it references the 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 regulations of three point two point one. Number four, so maybe I maybe I used the wrong term in terms of regulations.
I think so.
But the idea that the this is highly regulated through the zoning by law already, so sorry for that.
Yeah, no, that definitely sent me off because regulations, as everyone on our board either knows or needs to are not subject to the same zoning process through town meeting. So they change any day. So which is fine, that's important for regulations to have that quality. But I just, that definitely threw me off.
Sorry, I totally understand it. And so, no, there are no additional regulations associated with this outside of the zoning by law.
Yeah, okay.
Why, why would we co-sponsor this in versus?
Just voting for it?
Just voting for it.
I I I think it just shows our support to town meeting that we're, you know, working towards something that originally came through us relative to COVID, people working at home. And we, you know, want everyone to, you know, be clear that this is something that's supported by town government uniformly. But I, you know, if if there's opposition to it, if I I I can't imagine why they would be frankly, but you know. Yep.
I just don't understand why we would do, why we're over complicating something that doesn't seem that complicated to me, where we could just vote on it and show our support that way. But.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And I would just note that, for example, by striking out no home occupation, so first of all, I'm going to say for the fifteenth time, I totally agree with the goal. That's not the point. As members of the board, we need to be really careful and make sure that, you know, we understand town analysis about terminology that's chosen. It's not about the goal. We can keep talking about the goal 52 times, but I already agree with the goal. It's just the terminology that's chosen by striking out no home occupation shall be conducted rebuilding. You know, I'm concerned that there could be multiple home occupation not by the owner of the property. And and so in any event, it's just, it's a complicated area. I actually agree with what Mr. Furo was saying, but I don't want to disrespect the the good comments of our chair either about showing support for that. If it was simply the goal that has been indicated, then I wish it was possible to write it. And I'm not faulting anything, but in a way that might not in the future have some ramification about something else. It's a very complex area of the law. And I guess the bottom line is, I guess I'd agree with Mr. Furo, thank you.
So we are voting on the warrant as well. So there are two separate issues here. If we vote to move this, the, you know, the warrant forward as written, it does, you know, indicate although we're not supporting that article. You know, individually that, you know, as presented this what is it, this what it is. So if there are issues with that article substantively, I guess if we don't want to vote to support this on the warrant. Then we can make a recommendation to change language to the planning board at some point. I I I don't know. I I didn't think that this was going to be heavy lifting.
Or go ahead and 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 call the vote and I'll just abstain. What what, you know, I respect the process. This is probably already taken up a lot of time in the middle of the day and I I truly appreciate everyone's patience. It's a very complicated area of the law. I totally respect the planning board. It is their article. I totally respect what the chair is saying. I totally understand what our town council is saying. I just think that by striking that language, it might be opening something up that's intended for the goal that's been articulated. But may open up a whole another kind of area that was not really the reason for the change in the first place. So I think it's important to to just tread a little bit carefully. But if the planning board is their article, if they want to go forward, great. If they want to call a vote, then let's just call a vote on the full slate other than this article. And especially if you could call a separate vote on this article and I'll just note my abstention and we can keep moving. I I really appreciate everyone's patience, thank you.
Okay, I'll 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 move that the select board supports article four and joins the planning board on the warrant in in as a as a sponsor of the warrant article.
So moved.
Okay, it doesn't matter, I don't. If Jackie has issues with the language, maybe we should just not support it formally like that. I, it doesn't matter to me, go ahead.
I can't, I mean.
I'll second it, it's okay.
Thanks. All all in favor, take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Just with clarification, so I heard correctly, this is just a motion regarding article four.
Yes, it is.
Okay, abstention, thank you.
And yes, for me, the motion carries three oh and one. So moving back to the other substantive articles before the select board as listed, I I think it's on the screen somewhere. I have like too many screens open at once, but.
We're up to the noise by law, maybe?
Yeah, the noise by law, we can start there. Are there any issues or opposition to it? What's what's a little bit different from this from the construction by law is that we're still allowing activity. It's just really defining this mechanical landscaping. So if people want to be out there at four in the morning raking and, you know, weeding or doing whatever, that's fine. They just can't be, you know, using mechanical means to wake people up. So it's it's something that we've talked about over the years, but has really been moved forward now that everybody's working from home and realizing that there's a lot going on early in the morning. And so are there any questions or any comments?
I would just say that as we know, this has been years in the making and a lot of hard work by so many people. And as with any by law, if it proves that it's not perfect, then, you know, changes could be presented to town meetings. So at least it's another try, you know, attempt to dance the topic, which seems very important to people in town, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jackie. We had brought a a noise by law independently a few years back that was like really way too heavy lifting. It required the Board of Health to analyze sound. And, you know, this is just specific to the landscaping piece for, you know, blowers and mowers, so.
I'm very excited about this one.
Yeah, me too, it makes sense to me.
Okay, so we can I think move on from there, is there any other?
So are we at the next one?
Yep.
Uh, which is the what is the next one?
The land acquisition.
Land acquisition, I didn't want to say disposition.
Yeah. Nope.
So this is this is land at Washington and Swanton Streets.
Correct, that's correct.
And we have an appraisal of this?
An appra, an appraisal is in the works. We expect it sometime, I believe, over the next, prior to town meeting, Susan.
Okay. So.
Questions on article 12? One of the things that we did discuss this morning is trying to reach out to town meeting for some separate Zoom sessions to go over the waterfield law and article 12 as well. Because with these kind of complicated matters, we've had our hands in these things for a while. But it's a lot for town meeting members just to get in the mail and to absorb it. So I think we're going to try to have council present and reach out and engage town meeting with individual meetings. It's worked well for us in the past with larger items, right, luck farm. You know, the high school override, things like that. So we, I I think that there's enough heavy lifting here with, again, going back to a difficult remote format for town meeting that makes sense for us to to do that more formally. So it's a little bit more work on our end, but I think it makes sense.
Mike, if I could make one correction. In terms of, I apologize, the the appraisal that I'm waiting for is the waterfield lot appraisal will be in in the next two to three weeks. I actually have the appraisal for the Washington Swanton Street parcel. Sorry, I got one one ahead of myself here, so.
Well, there there are two articles right next to each other, so that's was why I was very haltingly proceeding, so, okay.
Yeah, and these articles are our articles, you know, for us to to move forward. So it's just a question of whether we want the warrant to reflect what we're doing here. If there's something that comes up and we don't want to move forward with it, we can also IP it before town meeting. I guess I wouldn't want to get too much substantively into some of these if we don't need to.
Right, so the purpose of the warrant is to just serve as notice to people that we are going to be discussing and possibly voting. The the town meeting will be discussing and voting on something. So did we, do we need to complete the the yellow or the blank here in article 12? Mark?
Yes, we need to. There's a few spots and I think we highlighted, you know, in the warrant that Mina and I have to go back. You know, prior to when this actually goes out to the printer next Wednesday, I believe, is the or Thursday, I think, is the day it's going to the printer. So there there are a few holes, I'll call them, that we're going to be completing over the next few days.
So basically, the appraised value is going to go into this article?
Correct, on on the the Washington Street article, it'll be the amount from the appraisal.
Okay. So do we need to do that right now?
No.
I don't know, is is Mina still on or did he?
Still here.
Okay. Mina, I think we were hoping to actually get a vote on the warrant today. I don't think the board's meeting again, are they before next Thursday when this goes to the printer? So the the question is, there's still a few little numbers or holes, shall we say, that you and I have to complete?
Yeah, the the a couple of, I mean, there are some things that might just be final proofreading and I don't think, and you could certainly vote subject to us clarifying those. The ones that I wouldn't feel as comfortable not having you vote on are some of the costs, the appropriation amounts and so on that need to be plugged in here. So, Mark, are all those filled in?
Yeah, I think. Let me just look at the list quickly, other than the one Susan just mentioned, which is the Washington Street one that does not have the amount in there, but that would be the appraisal amount. The MBTA cost sharing, I don't think we were going to put a dollar amount in the article. I think we were just putting a sum and then put the dollar amount in the motion.
Yeah, and and let me just say on that one, that one is through no fault of Mark's or Lisa's or anybody else's. The MBTA has not given us a draft of the cost sharing agreement that they want us to agree to. So that is a, that's some delay on the T as well.
Yep. So I don't believe, Nina, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think any of the other articles require dollar amounts that I'm aware of.
I don't believe so either, and I don't think even all the zoning ones have been checked and, you know, will come out of planning anyway. The planning board anyway, but they've been reviewed, all of the bylaw ones, we have certainly either written or reviewed, bylaw change ones we've written or reviewed. And all the financial ones, Stacy, you and I have all reviewed.
Yes, yep, we've gone gone through all of those, yep.
So I'm I'm content, I I I would say this is ready for a vote unless the board feels otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Where's Mike, is he there? Can't see everyone. All right, I'm ready to vote, I'm I'm.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the warrant for Fall Town Meeting November two thousand twenty as presented.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
So just as a point of clarification, should the order say other than article four where we have a separate vote?
Mr. Chair, can I just interject with a question because maybe to help clarify that? Jackie, are you objecting to it being on the warrant? Because if not, then that that's that's what.
No.
Being on the warrant.
That's what we're doing, yeah.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Attorney McCary. So this vote is simply for this slate to be on the warrant. Correct.
Mina? Do you want it? Yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. My my vote is yes.
Okay, and yes for me, the motion carries unanimously four to zero. And I forgot to mention too, just for the record, Selectman Golubov had to leave for a meeting, so isn't here. So we'll move forward with, or are we all, we all done here? Is that it? Right, is there anything else, Lisa or Mark that we needed to take care of?
I know we had, we invited a couple of people, including Nick, the new recreation director. Any questions about the warrant article related to some expenditures? That we needed.
Is this from the revolving accounts for part-time employees?
No.
No?
It's actually under standard articles revise Recreation Enterprise Fund. FY twenty one, we just due to the circumstances and with COVID and everything, you know, some of the revenues are down. Also expenses are down, there may be the need to revise the FY twenty one Recreation Enterprise Fund budget that was voted at the spring town meeting. And this, this is an article that is typically on the fall town meeting more and along with the one for the water sewer enterprise fund. Where we make, you know, kind of adjustments to the current year's budget. So we're working with Nick, Stacy and I met, you know, the other day with him. He's putting together, you know, different scenarios. There's still a lot of unknowns, obviously, in terms of his revenues and expenses. But he's doing different scenarios so we can kind of help him through it the best we can. Obviously have to make a lot of assumptions at this point, so.
So any, any, any questions for for Nick or any members of the board?
Well, I'm thinking since Nick is here and taking the time to talk to us, if there's something, you know, he would be the best person to hear the, you know, the order of magnitude or what what he's, you know, looking to, what the discussions are about. So I'd like to hear from him if he's around.
I'm I'm still here.
Oh, good.
He's there.
Hi, everyone.
Go ahead.
I just just following up, it Mark kind of summarized it pretty well. You know, we we were anticipating it being a rough fiscal year for us when we when we carved out the budget and met with Finance Committee last spring. And we kind of went with the middle ground scenario, which had us with revenues, you know, close to about 1.2 million dollars, a little bit more. And right now with with, you know, we we didn't have busing to Mystic. So with with COVID, kind of putting that all in a kind of a disaster. Our our childcare revenue is down quite a bit. So we're just coming up with alternative scenarios and trying to figure out additional sources of revenue. But we we don't want to overdo it either. We're trying to, we're trying to tread lightly, continue to keep kids separated. We're trying to, we're trying to tread lightly, continue to keep kids separated and cohorts. So, um, we're looking at, you know, the revenue to be down. Um, we're hoping not too too badly, but, um, you know, we've we have two different scenarios we're we're looking at. One. Um, if things kind of were status quo, um, as we are looking at right now, it it's looking at revenue would be down. In the eight hundred and like fifty thousand dollar range. Um, but in our second scenario, we're trying to, um, um, carve out additional source of revenue and get more kids involved in childcare and. Kind of changing the way we we do things. We we are looking at, maybe we could get it to, um, one point, um, one million dollars. So those are kind of the ranges we're looking at. So there there is a kind of a bleak range, and there's one that's a little bit closer to what we are looking at and and what was we called the middle, middle ground scenario. So that's that's, i- it's still not where we kind of hoped it would be, um. Without knowing what winter and spring are going to be, and then looking into summer, where we get a lot of our revenues in spring as we enter the summer programs. If we get back to a little bit more sense of normalcy, we might be able to bridge the gap, so it's it's all kind of a real crazy guessing game here.
Yeah, um, Mike, if I could mention one other thing that, um, Nick brought forward, and Stacy and I have been working with him on it along with Mina. Is Article Twenty-one, it's under the Select Board's, uh, articles. And maybe Nick could explain that briefly. What he's recommending is that we amend the bylaw so that we can charge part-time temporary salaries. To the revolving funds. Um, Nick, do you want to just touch on that? I think it's a great idea that you've come up with.
Yeah, so, so in my short time here, um, we've we we've noticed that we need to kind of protect the investment we made in our fields in town. Um, you know, I've listened to a lot of the people that utilize the fields. There's been, you know, lots of reports and and I've firsthand seen. Um, you know, road groups out on the fields, which adds the wear and tear. They're not going through the permitting process. Not paying fees, which costs us money. We we rely on the revolving account fees to kind of reinvest in in and take care of our fields. Um, so what we are, what we're proposing is to change the bylaws that are put together for both the grass and synthetic fields. To allow us to hire a part-time staff, um, specifically, um, their role will be in policy. And procedure, um, enforcement, so we're we're calling, we're we're going to be looking to add a position. That's funded from the fees in those two accounts. That's called probably the field marshal. They'll have, um, some part-time hours to kind of police the fields, help with safety, um, report any instances of of rogue users. And just make sure that the permitted policy and procedures are are being followed so that we can invest in those fields. So that we can increase our revenues, making sure that people are permitted and and and, uh, vetted through the recreation department so that they have the proper liability insurance. Um, that they are Corey background checked if they are doing programs on the field, so that's what we're looking to to do with that article.
That's good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Interesting, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Nick. Uh, that's great. Um, any any comments or questions or Amy? I didn't know if you wanted to weigh in as well. I know you've been working with Nick.
Yeah, no, I just, um, I mean, he's he's been doing all of the work. I'm super impressed, Nick. Thank you for everything. I know that you've got a million balls in the air right now, and with the uncertainty of, um. Of the pandemic and and what the future holds. I know it's it's really stressful, so I just want to commend you for the work you're doing and, you know, just know that, you know, we're here. You know, I think this is a great solution. Um, the two warrants, I think that that's a great, great process, and, um, hopefully, I think that that will. That part-time salary will help to bring us even more revenue, um, if we're able to identify those people that are using the fields without, um, the proper permits and without paying the fees, so. Kudos and, um, let us know if we can help out in any other way.
Thank you, Amy.
Any other questions for, um. Nick, um, I I do have to get moving myself, but, um, I I did want to say thank you, Nick. You know, we we, um. We don't always, um, see you, but we see the work that you do and how great of a job you've been doing, and we appreciate it, and, um, so. Um, I I know that you've got a lot going on, and this was probably the the worst time for you to come into a new position, um, with, um. Especially one that's kind of funter funded through in 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 enterprise, um, so, um, we appreciate that all all you're doing, and we. Uh, on our end, uh, you're nothing but good things, and we see that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Of course. Uh, anything else, uh, for members in the board?
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, motion carries unanimously four to zero. Uh, thank you very much, everyone. Uh, thank you, Lisa, Brian, uh, Mark, uh, Mina, and, uh. Also to to WinCam as well. We'll, uh, we'll see you soon.